Hello everyone, I am PurpleLink33. Welcome back to another edition of Let's Play The Legend Of Zelda Breath Of The Wild. Last time, we uh...did more up here. What are these little guys? Didn't do any shrines, I thought we did shrine, so we didn't do shrine. Then we came over this way, to Terrytown, because we got enough wood. And Hudson? Needs someone priest-like to marry them. Looking for someone like a Zora, oh and by the way... How about we go this way? Only one place I know where you can find a ton of Zoras. Couple of side quests we want to get taken care of that have been kind of on the docket for awhile. And then uh...yeah, lots of other things to do. So, let's go find the Zora whose last name ends in "sun". I know of someone, I have an idea. We are here at Neazyoma. Neazyoma? Yeah, for those of you who might be going, your pronunciation is terrible. You know what, I have no clue what to go off of here. Get all the fleet lotus seeds. Hi! Oh. No, I ain't heroes. Well you know, I know of one guy... Whose name ends with "everything is fine..." Everything is fine, nothing is ruined. Oh, that's good to hear. I just give it...wait a minute, fatal error! Where did all my emails go? Alright. This guy, we're heading out this way. This guy's name I believe, Ends In Sun. He's priest-like, right? Yeah, he's kind of keeping watch and he's just over here doing nothing. He'd love to do that. See, his name Ends In Sun! Yes sir, nothing to report sir. Thank you for peace and divine peace of Aruda. Best if we started getting more tourists again. Do you need anything from me? Your name? Master Link, indeed my name is Gaddison. What about it? I am looking for you. Seems to me that you have something on your mind. Care to let me in? Yes, yes, I see. Someone whose name ends with "sun" who can ask as a priest is what you seek? I am sorry, Master Link. I am a bloodstained soldier, I could never be a priest. But back in the domain, there is Capson, who was a priest in the past. Capson should be in the sleeping chamber, why don't you go visit him? I actually knew that. It's one of those, you know, common mistakes like, "Oh yeah, I remember talking to this guy, his name was Gaddison." Yeah, there's another one, his name's Capson. He desires to...it's another one of those, we desire to get away from this place. This is a sleeping chamber, really? Interesting, now then, what do you say? Good morning! Yes I did. Yep, yep, okay cool. This gentleman right here. During your travels, you meet and engage couples, I'd like you to introduce them to me. Joining two souls is a true honor, one I shall stick my life on. Just one more wedding, and I shall be fulfilled. Get a load of this! I had this couple, I've been waiting to hear those words. You're going to Terrytown, it's your location, hmm...Terrytown in Akala. Akala isn't too far from here, it would please me to hurry there right away. By yourself? Don't need to worry about me, I have always had confidence in my fins and feet. It has been a long while since I've had work and I'm eager to put my skills to good use. You should come as well, I'll start my preparations in Terrytown in the meantime. We've now gotten all of the races...to Terrytown. No other way to go but, just to...we're back, why not? We're gonna finish this side quest today. Like, within the next few minutes. From the ground up, will be completed today. Today. Pushing objects, we've done that. See, again on this screen, we're kind of running out of stuff to talk about all the time. We're just trying to talk about the rest of the game. I think I'm gonna take a break from Koroks and shrines here, maybe do some side questing. Maybe some shrines I was planning on doing in the meantime? There's one near here, that I would love to get done. Can you hear the change? The guitar that you usually hear in the Zora's Domain, that's here. Oh, that tower, that little tower there is new too. And now, the last house is available. And it's an inn, even better. There's a dongkei? Krii? Buh? Hey! You found a Zora? Thank you, really! He and I talked earlier, he said that he literally was a priest before he retired. Can't get more priest-like than that. And his name is Capson, so I have no objections there. But he's amazing, you were able to find someone priest-like with an acceptable name. Well, next is, uh-huh. Need 100 bundles of wood, right? Of course I'll have to invite guests in order to...oh, guests? I'm talking about my boss Bolson and my subordinate Carson. Oh, okay. I prepare the ceremony so my hands are full, could you invite them for me? Where are they? You know where they are, yep, I know. I know where they are. So yeah, this is done. Done breaking all the rocks. It's all to stand here, uh yeah, something gonna happen. Yep, something gonna happen. We're gonna go get Grayson...Grayson...Carson and Bolson. Bu-bu-bu-Bolson. I'll just continue sipping on my tasty beverage. Man, I'm actually really excited to be done with this side quest, I really am. The next bit's actually kind of funny. It's actually kind of a lot of funny, actually. It's kind of a lot of funny. 130 Korok seeds, we've really made a dent, we've started making a huge dent in those. I'm uh...this pleases me. This pleases me greatly. We're gonna head over this way. And we shall talk to you. Hi! Morning! Wait, what? Hudson's getting married, and he wants me to attend the wedding, wow! Good on him. Okidoo, I'm in, wedding time baby. Not like there's anything to do here anyway. Well I guess I'll get packed and head towards Hudson's place. Please. This'll be fun. Okidoo, looks like rain. Carson, we're headed out. Finally, we've been waiting for this day! And there's that. Okay, that should be enough guests, right? Back to Terrytown. Let's finish this. Let's end this, once and for all. Call it a quest. And move on to more important things. Like other stuff that I've totally forgotten about...over these uh...past few weeks. Like I got really excited about uh...I got really excited about getting all these dragonflies and I haven't turned them in yet. Seriously. Um, you're new. Traveling chef. Um, wanna buy? I do not want to buy. I'm good. Come to the wedding. We'll need you. Cook a hell of a feast. Hey, you extended my invitation for me, thank you! Now then, Carson and the boss Bolson are waiting for things to begin. Shall we start the ceremony? It's your ceremony, dude. Understood, let's join the gathering. I don't think she's too sure about this. Silence please everyone, we shall now begin. We are gathered here today to join Ronson, Hudson and Ronson. Imagine what it looks like, or what's missing of it. Wow. Hudson. Before the eyes of these witnesses and before those of goddess Hylia, Do you take Ronson to be your wife, to have and to hold in good times and in bad? Yo! Excellent. And Ronson. Before the eyes of these witnesses and before those of goddess Hylia, Do you take Hudson as your lawfully wedded husband in sickness and in health? And you also vow to, Name your children in accordance with the Bolson Construction Naming Guidelines. Pardon my language here a moment, but are you fucking kidding me? Wait a moment. Those vows are not traditional by anyone's standards. Makes you say that? They're not traditio... I think she means traditional in that sense of the word. A vow of undying tradition. And a vow of guidelines compliance! Oh god. I'll take that vow. Think of future generations. And she's sitting there going, "Fuck me, what am I getting into?" And all those are the guidelines. I do. Excellent. And so, dearly beloved, please help me in greeting this newly-married couple. I wish this new couple nothing but the utmost happiness and they set out in this journey of marital bliss. Can hear slight, some slight changes in the music. Little more of a string section. We have the uh, the Japanese instrument in the background here. That one. Ah, here we go. Hudson. Hey, it's you! Thank you for attending the ceremony. Are you crying? What? No, just something in my eye. And now Terrytown looks like a real town at long last. This is all possible because of you. I can't thank you enough for the hard work you did. Alright, this is for you. Three fucking diamonds! Those are found inside the boulders you smashed when you cleared land. Ronson and I have no use for them. You can take them. She's like, "Put one on my finger." Feels good to get that one done. Alright, now what does she say? Did she need me something? Savak! Yes, Savak, that is correct. The wedding ceremony wasn't what I expected, but it was special all the same. Would you like to dress? I made it myself, no kidding, I figured that. My husband wanted me to weave the gems that you mined into it, so every step down the aisle was a struggle. Oh god. Nice life for you, with all its twists and turns, I hope you'll stick with us through them. That is done. That is all sorts of done. Hiya. The bride and groom are so lovely, weren't they? Indeed, right you are Ken! Love is such a sublime precious thing, you know. My best wishes to the couple. Now that the wedding's over, we should probably head back to Hotina Village. Well then. Carson, we're going home! Okay. And that should be the last time we hear that little jingle. You sir! My attention is turning to you. What's the deal, you're...I'm a traveler. We don't have time to mingle with commoners, but I have a feeling about you, I'll make an exception this time. Your clothes. Guessing you're a little hard up for cash, right? Yeah. Appreciate your honesty. So for the down payment, I say 100 rupees sounds fair. A down payment? Don't care about the details here, take it. Hand? Dick? Not di- So you accept then, excellent! Listen what I have to say. The torn wetland lies to the west of here. You're aware there are guardians there. Not just one either. Two of them! You know how dangerous they are. So sunny boy, I'd like you to find and wallop both of them in torn wetland, then come and see me. Hobbies of the rich. You sick bastard. There are two guardians here. One of them moves. One of them not so much. Crap, both of them move. I lied. I need that, for a thing. And there goes that. I need you. Shut up. I have nine ancient arrows. What's this? Party truffle, good. This is where we find truffles. Try not to draw both of their attention. One at a time is good enough. Bye! Find and wallop both of them. Sure, no problem. You understand I carry ancient arrows, right? Hi. Dying! Oh! A big one! A giant ancient core, I am all sorts of happy about that. Um... Yeah, that's that. Armoranth. What's this? Not what I thought would be there. Uh, let's go up here, cause this'll just be faster I think, than trying to swim. And the guy goes to bed. And I don't want to have to waste time with dealing with that guy going to bed. So yeah, kill two guardians, you know, a lot early in the game, we look at that and go, "You want me to do what? Kill...two of them? I don't know if I can kill one!" I might be able to take down one of those stationary ones, but I don't think I can kill two of them. Especially they're both mu-mu-mu-moving! Now it's like, I got ancient arrows. Out of my way. And you sir! It's you. Give something else from me? Guardians kaput! Okay, okay, I saw the whole thing, I'll give you the rest reward as promised. Twenty dollars. You look so disappointed, you can't be, cause the reward is lower than down payment, can it? You commoners with your notions and assumptions. Whole idea is that a down payment is a small part of the final payment, and is an idea entirely unique to the common folk. In any case, our business is concluded. Go over there, or anywhere really. Anywhere that isn't right here. Should stay right here. I got everything I wanted. But I'll tell you, there are some things out there, things that all the money in the world can't get you. That's actually pretty...you know, that's actually pretty deep. There's one more thing here in Terrytown. That I want to take care of, we're gonna go in this guy's house. These are the uh, Bolson Construction Houses, and there's this guy. Hi! Hey, good evening! Oh, what? Oh, nice to meet you! I'm Grante, a dashy novice researcher of ancient civilizations. Still got a lot to learn though. So my father told me to go out and see the world. You also making your way through the world? Something like that. Well you too huh? Beside myself with glee. Anyway, it must have come a very long way to get here. Hey, how about as a reward, I'll let you buy my ultra rare armor at a decent price. Sound like a good deal? Sure you'll find a good use for it on your journey. Show me the goods! I'm looking to get a set of rare armor in stock soon, it's called um, Climb something or other. Complete set of rare gear called Barbarian something or other. A complete set of this rare gear, it's rubber something something. Here you go. This is where you can purchase the...oh my god, I can get both of these now? This is where you can actually find the stuff that um...maybe if you've accidentally sold it? You can buy it here. Um...this actually, I forgot these. That the Barbarian armor was for sale here, and I have the money for it, but I want to get them the right way. I'm looking to sell. Speaking of armor, I have some armor pieces for you, good sir. Cause I don't need five of these. I know it's only three, but still. Yep. And a cap. I have one piece of the sky armor, that is bullshit! Uh, what's this one worth? Fifteen rupees, and you want to sell it to me for fifty, screw you. Cannot sell that, cannot sell that. Cannot sell either of these, I can sell you. I can't sell that, cause I'm wearing it. I'm done. Well...for a reference point, remember...the Akala Ancient Tech Lab? Talking about their son? His name is Grante. Guys remember now? We want to head now over to the east Akala stable. And get the last piece of that which is missing over, of that which is over there. That's a fire, you know, I think I need you actually. Now you can't burn me. No... Dead. And of course nighttime prevails again. Ancient spring, I need those. Party radish. Oh. I think I need the fireflies? For something? Ah, keep changing clothes, my god! Let me just... Ancient screw. There is an...goddamn! More fireflies over here! You are mine! I have fifteen, you know I think I have enough. Poof. Bye puppies, run away. Run far away. I know it, those will be Korok later, we'll get that. Come around this way. That's stam again. No. I'm gonna forget it. The uh, by the way, the reception meal was terrible. I only assume you cooked it, cause you were in the vicinity. Please do not ever cook for me again, cause it was terrible. Um, oh, am I going...oh, this is exactly where I want to go, perfect! This is perfect! And then what? Oh, I can do that! That's a thing I can do. That's a thing I'm going to do. Alright. Grab some of the extra wood here. Not that I really need it to give up for that uh, for that quest anymore. But it'd be good to have, just, you know...on the...um... I'm gonna wanna, I'm gonna wanna...sip of the fire I think. Until noon! I mean, if you go just till morning, not everyone may be stirring and awake yet. So just go till noon. That way you know everyone will be awake, up, about, moving. And it's raining, I really don't care. Good goods! Creepy. Um, what do you have? I need? I'm good. Thank you. Okay. Hi mister, I like them. Okay, where's your sister? Donde esta your...there she is. For sure whether we're having, enough about that. Have you scared a warm, cold and electric darter? In that case, may I have them? Yes. Ew. I can't do this, just get them to her, just get them to gleam me yourself. I can do that. Where is she? Have the dragonflies. Oh hi mister! What? These are for you. Happy birthday. What is it, what is it, what is it, what is it? Wow, real life dragonflies! Are these really for me? They exist, lucky, lucky, it's a real life warm darter, and a colder and electric darter too! There's dragonflies all the hell over her! I'm just seeing this now! Hey, cut it out! So worth it! Go back over to her, see? See dragonflies? No, they're gone now. Hey. Managed to calm down somehow. Now then, I must thank you for catching those dragonflies. Here, take this. Many! I find with those most insects, humans that can't simply stand on dragonflies. When I think about them looking at me with those evil eyes. It was rough. Okay, I need to take a deep breath. Little sister's big request is complete, what do you say now? So it's you! So it's you. Oh. I'm good. I am good? I am all sorts of good. Now... To Cockarico Village. There is one more thing here that I keep trying to trigger. I think I have now. There's one more shrine in Cock... uh, near Cockarico Village. Actually, I should say in Cockarico Village, might as well say that. Um... Trying to think if I should do the, uh, the two side quests there too. I don't remember. I don't know. I don't know, man. Should I do them? Should I do them now? I don't know, man. Probably not. I don't want to have to go mess with kuko's. Damn chickens. Anyway. Let's go say hi to Impa. And possibly trigger something. I hope. Nope, it is still fucking there. Okay. Yes. Paya. Uh, what's that ball? This priceless artifact here, is that what you want to know about? This is the Sheikha heirloom that we've long protected. The hero was chosen by the Sheikha heirloom will be gifted the blessing of antiquity. With these words as our guide, we have watched over this sacred artifact since my grandmother's grandmother's time. And even since her grandmother's grandmother's time before that. I cannot say the entire meaning of these words, but now that I think about it, the hero as chosen by the Sheikha heirloom, could it be? Please don't hesitate to let me know if I can ever be of service. What's your story? You, I... You want to know my, my, my sto- story? Well, my name is Paya. Where is it? Uh, it's kinda... Master Link. Okay. So there are some things you have to wait until actually after you complete the game to trigger. Oh. I'm too intimidated. Now you've seen it, you know you have. Aren't you drenched? Please allow me to explain. Yep. I figured out where was me... Keep raining off walls, wards off lightning. Lucky bastard. It looks soaking wet, but I assure you, I'm actually quite comfortable. Okay. Sounds good. You know what we're gonna do? We're going here. Wake up. Yeah, wake up dude. Uh, nighttime. I wonder if I'll be awake. You know, all the night audit hours I've, I've worked, I can't say I've ever fallen asleep in the job. I have been close. I'm not gonna lie. I have been damn close. But... Now. I'll be right back. Okay. Something I had forgotten to do. I have to do these. My kuko's. My precious kuko's! They haven't come home yet! I'll go find them. Ten. I don't want to do kuko's. I hate kuko's. So in order to trigger the thing that, uh... That I keep think- that I keep, uh, talking about, I have to do some, uh, some stuff first. Only four, okay, so, oh. So there's six left. So that's ten counting the ones that are in there. That's good. That's very good. Are you, are you Cockarico Fried Koko? Five. There's one on a rooftop. See? Should be four left. You're, you're weird dude. Four left. Um, what's in here? Going here. Oh, no, I don't want to wake you up. Sorry, I don't want to wake you up. In. Uh, let me up. Thank you, chicken. It's definitely a very, much more in-depth uh, Cockarico Village, at least I think so. One, two, three, four, five... One in there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Two more. I'm up past my bedtime. Yeah. Bedtime's kind of relative for me. Uh, there's two more. There's one. Sorry. But there's a chicken. There's a frog, random frog there. And that is a shroom. If this is one of those things where I like, if I fall asleep and they all go back to where they were, where I, where I just picked them up from, I'm wanting to be very upset. More sunset fireflies. A whole lot of them. There is the last chicken. Please tell me it triggers when I put ten in. Okay, in here. It literally looks like a chicken coop in here. Kado? I don't... No, I'm not part of the Iga Clan. Okay, okay, cool. Oh, I got pumpkin. Oh, and he wants, he wants to sell me more of them. I'm very afraid of of doing automated thing. I didn't wait till morning because I really don't want to have to do that again. I mean, seriously. That's steen, okay. Where's Kado? Or Cado, or whatever the guy's name is? That's that shop. Oh. My wife, the mother of my children, was, she was killed by the Iga Clan. That is why Coco now acts as Cutla's mother. If only I had been able to stop them. And no diary to read. Ne- 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 nope, get open again. Kind of running around. I do not want any of them to fly in the coop. Literally, again. Oh. I found him. Oh, you're right there. So you're gonna get back home. I got fifty rupees. Well, the coop is complete. One more. We've actually, we've completed the side quests, we just need to find the person. I don't remember who... I don't remember whose side quest it is. That's steen. Trying to find this one lady that will help me trigger the shrine quest I've been trying to do for the longest time. This Pekango, what's up dude? No one else in here. Okay. Five fifteen, I think everyone shows up around six. Oh. There's Coco. Nope, Dorian, no. Oh, you bastard, let me, let me in. Raka, hi. Hmm? Who is it? You're totally my type. Ooh, and you even have a Sheikha slate on your hip. Wait. Huh? A Sheikha slate? Isn't that like, an incredible thing that only incredible people can have? I'm not sure what this all means, mister, but you seem to be a great deal more than important than you appear. Ya. Okay. Um... Alright, go. And the goddamn kuko is a full in the coop again. My chickens have fluffed again. I don't know what to do. Okay. That's it. Sip of fire till nighttime. Good, she's not there anymore. Hey, to make sure I find the right person, I think she's in that house. I believe it's in here. Is that her? That, I don't think it's her. Okay, that was, that was funny. Um... Crap. What house is she in? Uh... Am I missing something again? Thanks, Daruk. Not this one. Well, by, by process of elimination, it has to be this person, it has to be up here. Armor shop. We'll just climb the damn fence. Climb the wall. In here. This is it. I see the roads are dangerous at night, so I had to come straight home without searching for fireflies. I miss them so much, and the same tired thing every night, I'm so sick of it. If only the fireflies would come to play here so I could still see them. By Firefly's light! That glowing, could be you caught some? Show me, show me! Fifty dollars for five firefly- five fireflies, that's it. I gotta do it. You're pretty too. Thanks! By Firefly's light is complete. You know... Alright, that is all done. And now we should be able to trigger the thing I've been trying to trigger for, I don't know, two months. Get up on the thing. Whoa. Who did this? I can't believe this. What? Oh. It's gone. Link. I swear I only took my eyes off it for a second. What should I, what should I do? Keep your chin up, it's okay. Keep my chin up? Do you even realize how bad this is? The Sheikha heirloom. The heirloom has been stolen! Wish I finally discovered the heirloom's secret. The hero, as chosen by the Sheikha heirloom, will be gifted the blessing of antiquity. Paya thinks the hero chosen by the Sheikha heirloom is you. So she stayed up all night researching the heirloom. She came to the conclusion the blessing of antiquity refers to one of those ancient shrines. And that heirloom is the key that opens the shrine. And just before we were able to tell you this, the thing is stolen. I've been cleaning the heirloom regularly every morning, from, every day from morning to dusk. Someone must have stolen it during the deepest hour of the night. This place is off limits to outsiders. And no one from the village would ever do such a thing, would they? Stolen heirloom, it is a shrine quest. Someone with evil tend, yep. Glad grandmother's in safe, but I still feel so violated. Link, Paya's afraid that the thief may still be nearby. Would you please stay by her side today? Yes. Master Link. Thank you for staying by my side for the whole day. I see now the crying and feeling scared won't help us get the heirloom back. I see now that crying and feeling scared won't help us get the heirloom back. I checked with Dorian and Kato. Kado, probably, is his name. But they said they didn't see anyone other than villagers around. I'll try again to remember all I can about the night the heirloom was stolen, but the thief may still be hiding nearby. I have a bad feeling. If you spot any suspicious movement at night, don't approach. I already know. I already know. Who could have stolen the heirloom? There were some people visiting the manor, but they were all known villagers. Who came by? The people who came by yesterday were... Lazly from the clothing shop, and Grandma Melly from the plum garden, that's about it. I didn't see anyone else. Filthy thief! Me and Dorian were standing guard the entire time, how'd they get past us? Villagers. Yes, known villagers are free to come by, come and go as they please. And the only people that stopped by the, around the heirloom where we're missing, were Lazly and Melly. Used to come around noonish, lately they've been stopping by at night. Must be too busy to stop during the day. Let's go talk to Lazly. Ready to be enchanted? Nighttime activities? Excuse me? None of your business what I do at night. Anything about finding a new pickup line? Alright. Top suspect. And here. Nighttime activities? At night? So he knows. I didn't think anyone had seen me. Nighttime, huh? Well, I sleep at night in my house, on a bed, that's about it. So we got some time to kill. There's a Korok there. I'mma wait. Ain't till about ten o'clock is when this, is when this happens? I'm not Jared. You know who I'm after anyway. It's not you. It's you. Just follow Dorian. I can tell you it is Dorian. I know this. How could they? He's the one. I must do something. Another stealth mission, which is why we're wearing stealth clothes. I hate switchback, uh, things on, on stealth missions. Cause you never know where the hell he is. Where are you? Where are you? If the bloopie shows up, we're not worried with it. We are not as quiet out here. Don't you dare do a double back on me. Yeah, it's starting to rain. Going this way this time. Are you there? Bunny? You definitely don't want to get to the last... section. What's that? Must be imagining things. Say it. Say it. Show yourself! I intend to. I know you're there! Show yourself! You don't have to shout. I'm right here. So you're the one who stole the heirloom? Such anger. It seems the only thing that's truly special to the fools of this village. Why would you steal it? Don't play dumb, Dorian. You knew what you were getting yourself into when you decided to leave the organization. You forfeited your life the moment you left. You did well to tell us about the heirloom. Unfortunately, your usefulness has come to an end, as must you. But first... It appears we have an audience... For my fallen master! Ow! You let him go? Nope. Hey, hey! I haven't... Die! Can't believe I was being followed. I'm sure you figured it out, but all of this is my fault. There's no point in trying to hide it. I am a member of the Yiga Clan. Or I used to be, anyway. But then I met the most incredible woman who blessed me with two amazing children. And so I tried to change my ways, tried to leave the clan. But the Yiga, they took my wife's life as punishment. I couldn't let them hurt my children, so I used my position as gatekeeper to gather information for the Yiga. I told them about you, and about the village, in exchange for safety. But my grief over losing my wife has consumed me, and I finally decided to cut ties with the Yiga completely. I decided I could protect my children from the Yiga, I wasn't afraid of them. But the Yiga are peculiar evil. They told me they would kill both Impa and Paya if I didn't play along. Paya figured out that this heirloom is the key to opening an ancient shrine. We weren't able to make it work, but Paya thinks that maybe you can. Paya, and all of us, are devoted to helping you and your quest. Now please, restore this heirloom to its pedestal. Yup. This is what I've been looking for. And I forgot you had to do other stuff first to get to it. Done. The shrine! So the heirloom was the key to opening the shrine. Incredible. Master Link, I... I'm very sorry for all thi- Ah, I love it. I know it's a self-request, but could you, do you think you could keep what really happened a secret? I truly don't deserve mercy, but I don't want my children Coco and Kotla to suffer anymore. I know it doesn't make up for what I've done, but I pledge to protect the village and my family from now on. No matter the cost. The Laknarokni Shrine. Laknaroki? Of course I started playing the thing and, yeah, this is, this is just a blessing shrine. We've, we've completed what we need. That is done. And I think after this, we're gonna be done for tonight. Oh yeah, definitely, uh... Blessing shrine, indeed. What have you? The edge of duality, ooh, that's a good one. That's actually one I wanna keep that one. Instead of you, ooh, instead of you. Which one do I keep? You know what? I have a lot of those. I haven't been using them. Hello, Laknarok-oki. And with that, this shrine is done. As is all the, uh, side quests. Well, actually not all the side quests. There's still some cooking stuff we can do. With Coco. Hey, we'll do that real quick before we, uh, cut the, cut the video. We'll, uh, sit by the fire or sleep till morning. And then, uh, we'll cook with Coco. Because Coco's a good cook. Okay. We'll also go real quick over to the, uh... The Great Fairy. Great Fairy, Great Fairy. Can't see? Welcome back. Ooh! Oh, goody. I'm going for a big ol' kiss. Enhance away. Huh? Is it gonna be enough? No, it's not gonna be enough. I don't have enough to do both. I'm not gonna have enough to do both. Which is fine, we're not, we're not done in the Hebra region yet, we still have a lot to do. There goes that. Enhance away. That's something I need. Done. Got the thing. Enhance away. Fire key swings, oh god, lots of them. Oh, I need star fragments for you. I can do one. Enhance away. And there goes the ancient helm. Need some star fragments to get the last two pieces, of course. Of course I do! Which means I have a feeling I'll have one afternoon where I'm just gonna be sitting here, farming star fragment after star fragment after star fragment. It better be one of my days off. That's right, getting that star fragment's gonna help. Okay. No, give me that. There's another one. There's another one somewhere. It's over there. Yeah, over here. Endure carrots, very helpful. I really don't need any more silent princesses. But they're here! I'm looking at my... At my timer and thinking, hmm. I have a lot of time on the clock here. Not a lot left, I mean a lot that I've accrued. Game? That is the first time that's done that in a long time. Uh, yep, yep. Uh, regular bed, until noon, thank you. You won't be awake. I just did it at the best time because the fires have all gone out. Alright, let's go talk to Coco over here. Hi Coco. Hot buttered apple! Apples and goat butter. Oh no, Coco was out of goat butter. Voila, goat butter. Aw. I don't know goat butter? Really? Damn! Okay. Goat butter. I'll take them all, why not? Voila, goat butter. There you go. Goat butter? Yay! Cook, cook, cook. I get hot buttered apple too. Yay, cook, my Coco is complete, next one. Now, tough meat stuffed pumpkin! Raw meat, raw meat, oh, I've got raw meat. Voila, raw meat. Is this raw meat? Cook it. Pumpkin and meat. Yeah, okay. Yes! Coco cuisine is complete. Oh, there's Coco cuisine. And Coco cuisine complete. And for dessert, we make honeyed apple. Oh, I need to, I'm gonna need to find Corcybe honey. I have that. I have... Wait. Yep. Her face is awesome. I do like that little jingle. That's really sad. Good. Oh, cool. Coco specialty is complete. One more thing before we cut the video, we've done a lot of things today. We have completed the Terry Town segment of our quest. We have completed the Cocker Rico Village segment of our quest. And, we found a Korok. Hey! That was not nice, game. I was trying to do something all cool, and you go, "Nope." Hey! What? A Sankar carp. I have never seen that before. There we go. And with this, I think... We call it a day. Next time, in Let's Play Legend of Zelda: Breath of the Wild, I think we're gonna head to the desert. We're gonna go take a look. Or we're gonna go take a look... This way. And get back to, well... The Champion's Ballad. Yeah. We'll get back over this way. We'll see you guys then.